Okay, it is 6:01 PM on Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. We call the Common Council Meeting to order. Tonight with us, we have the Barclay family, Sam, who is in fourth grade, Henry, who is in third grade, and Julia, who is in first grade. You want to come on up and lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you for joining us tonight. In front of you are the minutes from our last meeting on February 13th. Were there any changes or corrections? I'm sorry. Roll call, please. I'm sorry.
Middleton, Axon, Varga.
Here.
Romano, Axon, Weigold.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
In front of you are the minutes from our last meeting on February 13th. Were there any changes or corrections? The only thing I would say is that in my report, I said my state and city address was on March 8th, and it's actually on March 15th. Thank you. Yes, it's actually on March 15th. So I don't know if you want to just, even though I did report it, if you could maybe make an editor's note or something, maybe? Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion by Tad, second by Dan, further discussion. All those papers should be the usual signed. It is unanimous at this present. Next up is a presentation by Whitley County Pride, Savannah.
Thank you for having us. I truly appreciate that. So I'm Savannah. I'm the president and founder of Whitley County Pride. We originated and launched publicly on October 11th of 2023, which was National Coming Out Day. So a little bit of background, I moved here in May of last year, at the end of May, right at the beginning of Pride Month, and I realized a need for LGBTQ resources and services here in Whitley County. So a little bit about us, our mission is to exist, to create inclusive and accepting and strong community connections for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer community of Whitley County, Indiana through education, support programs, and community events. We aim to raise awareness and promote understanding for any challenges faced by the LGBTQ community that is everywhere. You know, it's not just here in Whitley County. So a little bit about us, we are going to be starting our LGBTQ education, including hosting workshops, probably virtually, as well as in person, and partnering with organizations. One of our big partners is the Positive Resource Connection that's out of Fort Wayne. They provide a lot of amazing things, such as testing for HIV and things along those lines, which is part of LGBTQ community for the health situation, but it's everywhere, So we also will be doing support groups. This is new, and will be starting next month. A lot of our community members are having to travel to Fort Wayne and larger cities, so we are going to be bringing that here to Columbia City to serve Whitley County, as well as possibly reaching out to like Huntington County, Cosiasko, Noble County, DeKalb County, a lot of these smaller communities that have to go to Fort Wayne. And the main reason for that is I came from South Bend. I actually grew up in Hicksville, Ohio, so a very, very small town across the state line. And I didn't come out until after I had moved to the city, and I didn't realize the challenges that are faced in the smaller communities. So being part of the LGBTQ community in the city versus a small town are two different things. They don't understand the issues that are arising with that. And so our goal is to have these support groups to offer to the smaller towns. Obviously, we're not going to turn anybody away, but those will be held twice a month starting in April. So if anybody ever has questions about that, they can reach out to us on our website, which is whitleycountypride.org, or any of the board members. We have 12 board members that are also listed on there, and it should be also under our support groups tab here shortly, once we push that out. Katie, may I go ahead and introduce yourself? Yeah, I'm sorry, what is it?
It's all good. I'm Katie Dorries. I am part of the board. I'm helping with marketing and some of the membership parts.
I am Leanne Facer, and I am an ally. And I've been an ally for a long, long time, since my kids were in school. My children are allies. My grandson, 16 years old, going to be 17, he is an ally. And what that is, and what that means in a small community, is that concept of Christian agapi love, accepting people, getting to know them, understanding and protecting them. And we don't want to be that place known for a situation where someone of this community is not protected. And so I would say that all of us really need to be allies, but I wanted to talk about too, we had the Prism Marketplace. And being a person, my children have gay friends, I have gay friends, but I don't live it. So we had this marketplace out at Edna Troy, and two families came through and mentioned how they wanted to leave because one of their children came out, their church even turned on them. And they were crying. They didn't know there was resources. They were wanting to leave. And then there was people that told us that their children left. And I knew that one of my best friends left this town for a long time, and when he came back, he got the same stuff. But what we do in here is we want safety, want to be known for love, we want to be those allies. And that's what I'm trying to do right here, is make sure that this works and that this becomes commonplace to a point where I don't need to know what you do in your home or your house for a job, or to be a friend, or anything like that. So that's why this is so important, because we have people hurting. We had teens come in. We have people that were, that have been in this community, they're like 60, 70 years old, they're driving out to Edna Troy, tears in their eyes, because they can't be who they are. Everyone knows, they can't be who they are. We even have a big donor, doesn't want anyone to know, but everybody knows, they all use the services, but we can't talk about that amongst us. So we want this to be, it is what it is. I know Savannah, I know her wife, I know my son's best friend and his husband, and they were friends since they were young. Didn't turn my son gay. He was over at our house all the time. My dad, my mom, we all accept him, we love him. So that's why this is so important to this community, because we hear it all the time. You know, people in schools that are being attacked because of who they are, we don't want that. We need your help. We need you guys to stand up, everybody, we need you guys to say, I'm an ally. I care for those that I don't even understand. And so that's how I see Prism Marketplace, that's how I see Whitley County Pride.
So a little bit more on Prism Marketplace. So we had 30 vendors come out to Edna Troy, excuse me, and like I was saying earlier, I could have put some of them in the hallway, we could have had more, but that's not inclusive, right? We want people to come out and know that they are loved and accepted, because there are people leaving, you know, and that's the biggest thing. I told you guys, or I said earlier in the Board of Works, I could have left, I could have went somewhere else, I could have went anywhere in the world, but I chose Whitley County to move to bring my family, because I see how incredibly great this community is. And so that's what this was. Prism Marketplace was a sense of community, and the biggest thing was, everybody was like, that was probably the best thing. I've got people that are turning on other big events to come here and to support us here in Whitley County. And I think that speaks volumes, it's huge. So really quick back on this, so we have another event, September 7th and November 30th. So this event will be held three times a year, and it's continuing to grow. In the last meeting at Board of Works, we were approved to have Prism Fest here in downtown Columbia City. We're very excited to bring people from the outside to come and see what we have here, right? I mean, Columbia City is a beautiful city. I know that, I've seen photos and things of how things have come along, including the city hall, you know, it's truly incredible. And I said this to Mayor, and I know I've told you, like, I am so thankful to live here in Columbia City. So like I said, bringing the vendors and businesses and organizations that are here in Whitley County and beyond, right? But we're obviously focusing on Whitley County. Go ahead, Katie.
So like I said, I'm Katie. I grew up here, I just came back to work here, as well as here, at the Columbia City High School, so I'm one of the teachers. And I see this a lot with just my friends, just like you were saying, I had a lot of friends that moved away because they didn't feel accepted here, they didn't feel like they had the resources here. And then when we had the marketplace, a lot of them came back and were like, I didn't know this was here. Like, I didn't know there was this much support here, so it was really cool for that. And so we have our membership program, which is just $10 a year, and what we do is we have some member-only events, and then we have special giveaways for them as well. Some of our member events, you'll also see community events that are kind of fundraisers, but we do something special for our members. So we have a Ten Caps game that we're going to go to with our members, and some, we'll start opening that up to the community as well, after they get their tickets first. We also have a, we've rented out the Fall Aquatic Center as well in August, so they'll have like a big event there that they can kind of do. We're also trying to bring in our local businesses in Columbia City, and so we're talking about having a different type of scavenger hunt that gets them out into the community, doing some cleanup activities for the community, doing some outreach, and doing just different things of like, hey, this small business has a, has a new product that they want to do. Take a picture with it, go say hi to K Bruha, or whoever, okay? Just anything that we can to kind of give back to the community and show that it, like, we're all here to be supportive of each other. Again, it's not just because you're gay, it's because you're an ally too, or it's because we're just accepting of each other, and we all want to live here, and we all want to give back to the community as best as we can.
Yeah, I think it's really well said. You know, I am a person that will support local time and time again. When I first moved here, I was, I'd go by Morshe's all the time, I said, I'm going to build my kitchen table with their lumber, and surely I did. I could have went to Lowe's and probably saved some money, but Morshe's and other businesses are ones that are giving back to our community and supporting our youth and things along those lines. And I lived in the city, and I moved back to a smaller town because of the values, and you know, I will give back in every way, shape, or form. So with that being said, the community engagements as well, I stand for everything local when possible. We're planning on being involved in Whitley County as much as possible, including community events, volunteering and showcasing the LGBTQ community, because they have a lot to offer. You'd be surprised what the people that are that way, so you know, just think about your words when you use them, because honestly, you don't know who you're talking about. Like Katie had mentioned, our upcoming events, we have First Friday, we'll be doing the Ten Caps, we'll be doing a fundraiser with that and things along those lines. Unfortunately, I don't have it all in front of me now, because I switched it over to this, but we'll be doing a lot of different things, getting involved down in South Whitley with their Fall Festival, hopefully Turtle Days, Old Settlers a little bit, anywhere where we're welcome, we're wanting to be involved, because again, we're just trying to provide these positive community connections for everyone, and let everyone know that, you know, they're loved and mined here. So again, I appreciate everybody. If anyone ever has any questions, they can reach out to me or any of our 11 other board members, there's 12 of us now, or visit us on whitleycountypride.org, and we're happy to answer any questions, especially along the lines when it comes to LGBTQ topics. Like I've said to other people, when you come to us with, in good faith, and you know, there's no question that's bad, as long as you're acting in good faith, and we're happy to answer those questions. We're here to educate and bring these positive community connections. So again, I appreciate everyone for having us, it's truly appreciated, so if anybody has any questions, we're quick, I guess I can answer those as well. Thank you so much.
Yes, appreciate it.
I think we got you before, if you had any downstairs.
A little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Also, thank you for working with my schedule, I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, we appreciate, we appreciate your work at this. Ordinance 2024-2, do I have a motion to read by title only? Motion by Tad, seconded by Dan, further discussion. All those papers should be the usual signed, it is unanimous. Please read ordinance number 2024-2 by title only.
Ordinance 2024-H2, enrolling amending chapter 53 regarding the user fees to pay the cost of trash collection for residential customers within the city of Columbia City.
As a reminder, this is, as I mentioned the last time, there's a, there's an increase on the cost of trash to us from our contractor. Our trash committee reviewed it, and again, this is basically money in, money out, meaning residents pay the trash fee, we pay the trash company, and we also pay for the junk pickup through the same fee. So that being said, there is a $2 increase in the trash fee monthly, but again, it's really just a pay direct, so. So this is, so we have a three-year extension, yeah, it's a three-year, so this will be for through 2027 at this point. Yep. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve, ordinance 2024-2 on second and final reading?
So.
Motion by Leslie, seconded by Tad, further discussion. All those papers should be the usual signed, it is unanimous. Next up is ordinance number 2024-3, do I have a motion to read by title only?
So.
Motion by Tad, seconded by Dan, further discussion. All those papers should be the usual signed, it is unanimous. Please read ordinance number 2024-3 by title only.
Ordinance 2024-3, an ordinance of the city of Columbia, sorry, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Columbia City, Indiana, annexing certain territory to the city of Columbia City, Indiana, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the city of Columbia City.
So this is the first reading, first reading, if you will, of the second phase of the annexation of the county-owned property. As you may remember, we heard the petition last time. We have the first reading of the ordinance today. I think it's the next meeting we have the public hearing?
Yeah.
And the second reading?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the process for the second and final phase of the annexation of county-owned property. Again, this is off of 200 East, and the fiscal plan was heard by the Board of Works earlier tonight, no concerns on that. Again, it's, right now, it's agricultural land, so it doesn't change anything, certainly as they add houses and stuff, we'll have additional costs, but. Questions, comments, concerns about the ordinance?
May I just?
Yes.
This also requires a third reading, so the second reading is not our normal second reading approval time, we'll actually have to.
Have a third reading?
Yeah, I just, I'm disappointed.
Okay, well, thank you, I didn't remember that, so I'm glad you did, so.
How does this coincide with the previous annexation that the county does not recognize as a finished area?
So we were, so I was contacted by the county, by the county assessor, I believe, about the previous annexation, and the concerns that the second annexation had not happened at that point. I also was contacted by the county auditor about that same thing. Later, I was contacted by the county attorney about that same thing, and my response to the county attorney, as well as the other two members, was the annexed property is ag. In state statute, when agricultural property is brought into the city limits, it doesn't change the tax structure. Therefore, it does, to me, it doesn't matter at all for the 2023 tax year paid 2024, it doesn't make any difference at all, if you just keep it as county, because it doesn't change anything, there's nothing, there's no difference. The county attorney seemed to be perfectly fine with that, and said that it was all good. So that's the best answer I have for you, is I've heard nothing more from the county since then, so.
I kind of think that.
Yes, I know.
You know, they're still not recognizing that, and that's my issue with the county, and they're not recognizing that, even as of today, because I brought that up, and I'll tell them you're not recognizing that as, I said, we're getting ready to annex the second part of this, and you're not recognizing the fact that we're annexing.
Well, and I think ultimately, I mean, you know, we went through, okay, so two things. Number one is reminder that this is a super voluntary, meaning there is one property owner who has requested our annexation, we have not went after them for annexation, they have came to us first. Second, and maybe more importantly is, is again, because it doesn't change the value, and there's nothing happening on it, I don't see that that really is a huge deal. At the end of the day, we went through the formal process, the first phase, we're going through the formal process, the second phase, no dollars are going to be changing hands at this point until there is development and construction on that site. So unless told otherwise by the county attorney, and Marsha, I guess, unless told otherwise, we're going to stick with the plan, and if they have issues, then they can discuss between the lawyers on that, I guess, but.
At first, we left the city boundary the way we did, with the parts and stuff, but.
Gotcha, okay.
So I just thought it was important to say to where we're at, because I kind of already do that, and there's your, I just like, I'll check some of my.
Well, and again, at the end of the day, once the full property is brought into the city limits, after the second annexation takes place, property again doesn't change value, because by state law, ag land brought in does not change value. So, so long story short is, is that until something is built on there, it's really not going to matter, but I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying, so.
Can I, and we can talk later on this, but what does the term recognize mean? What does that mean to them, that they're not recognizing?
Well, they think that that property should have been split, a quick claim to county to herself, so that area is separate from the big peaks, then they would have recognized that as a.
What, what should have been?
The, that the property should have been split for the first annexation to the second annexation, quick claimed over to county for some reason.
Quick claim from herself to herself, because they're basically splitting that area out of the big peaks, that's what they're saying. So that should have been like a quick claim to herself to herself, recognizing that eighty, whatever.
I see, I see.
That's what they're saying, and that's why they haven't done anything.
Well, and again, I don't know that anything actually changes, right, until something's built.
And if the county attorney agrees, well, the county attorney needs to step off and tell them.
Apparently.
Unless you can just take it up.
Cool. Any other, any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, do I have a motion to approve, ordinance 2024-3 on first reading?
Second.
Motion by Leslie, seconded by Tad, further discussion. All those papers should be the usual signed, it is unanimous at this present. Thank you. Parkman reports, Chip.
Last night at the park board, we opened up the Eagle Park, or we awarded the Eagle Park bids, one to Hunger and one to Shekel for the skate park and the rest of the pickleball courts and everything, so we're moving forward with that, hopefully May, we'll get started on that. Monday night, we have a residential meeting with the residents of West Gate to discuss that construction. And Blue River Trail, we're trying to acquire, we've got two more easements that we need to acquire, and then that will go off for bid, and 100 South Sewer Project is moving along very well, they've got the gravity in, and the lift station somewhat in, and we're just waiting for the fourth main, so everything's moving along very quickly.
Question to Chip. Thank you. Terry.
We're still waiting on baseline coming and installing fibers, some like some, a booster station will come up on the fiber network. Sir Finn and I was here today to install two new lines for us, and about noon, 1:00, we just disappeared, so I'm not sure what happened there. Hopefully they'll come back. We got a bunch of quotes that we had last year requoted, so they came in, and we're starting to distribute those to see if we can get some of that work that we had planned for last year done this year, so that's it.
Question to Terry. Thank you, Terry. Kelly.
We're working on the paving list, starting to get that list and other pavement preservation list around for this year, and for paving will be for next year, but starting that list right now. Been doing some televising work, had a crew out today working with a camera truck on the sewer mains. Next week, we'll be sending four guys down to Indianapolis for some equipment, and been just doing maintenance on the streets, alley signs, sort of having a sweeper out running with the nice weather we've had. And just a shout out to some of the guys on the department, we had some of our salt boxes on the top, the grates were falling in, pretty bad shade rusting up, and they took it on themselves to, we went to Fort Wayne Steel and got steel, and they, we got a guy in there that loved it really good, and they fabricated a couple grates for the top of two of the salt boxes, and saved us some money on having to go purchase any, so shout out to those guys. That's it.
Question to Kelly. Thank you, Kelly. Mike.
Still working out on Chauncey Street, we kind of, going to slow down, we've had the last three sewer lines we've crossed from the residential houses down there, we've had to relocate, and then the gas company has a line down there that they can't locate at this time, so they have to come in, huddle, I think, and locate it before we can go past there, where we're at. The water line on 205 has been pressure tested and bacteria tested, and everything passed, so it has been pressurized, and it's open, so it is being used now to take water down to the Quell Ridge area. So we're just waiting for it to get the information back and go down 200, and that'll be done.
Question to Mike. Thank you. Mike.
During the Board of Works meeting, they approved Phase 3 of the Skater Project, so we'll be doing two more control panels this year, they just contracted with Donahue and Associates. We have three panels that were installed, they've been up and running for two weeks, they're functioning very well, no issues. I guess continue to work on the secondary repairs, some of the equipment they ordered in, the parts and pieces and everything, they fabricated themselves, and they've done a great job as far as measuring and installing equipment, it's looking really well, very nice, they've done a great job. Continue to do our sludge hauling, it's kind of on hold right now, but we'll start that back up. Zion has been in yesterday and today, installing the new mod units for headworks pumps, and also doing PM work on all our pumps at the same time. EQ basing pumps all the way through testing, oil changes yesterday, and they started headworks They've got one pump to go, but they're holding off on that in case we have storms tonight and tomorrow, because we'll have to have both those, we'll have to have two pumps to operate. One of them, they found, they run, they have, the pumps have food-grade oil in them, it's kind of a white color. It finds a thing to explain to food-grade oil, if it would happen to leak or anything like that, you're not going to contaminate or kill your plant with an oil spill or anything being food-grade, so it's a lot safer. Well, it's supposed to, like a white color, as they drain it out, and one of them, when the oil came out, it was black and looked like it had a few shavings in it, so we'll have that one out of service today, and they're going to pick it up, and that'll affect Indianapolis for a complete tear down, probably, so they won't, I'll get a call back on that, we'll have that one repaired. And still waiting on Ford to come in and replace the influent flow meter and the new sludge return flow meters, they were supposed to be in this week, I haven't, haven't seen them yet, or they haven't been contacted, so they shouldn't be in, that's all I've got.
Question to Mike. Thank you. Thomas.
This past Saturday, the Whitley County EMS put on an EMS symposium, 14 of our firefighters attended that from our city, that helps get some, a lot of our in-service, well, not a lot, it's about 20% of our in-service hours that we need to maintain our EMS certification, so I appreciate Whitley County EMS for hosting that. Myself, Ron Jones, Toby Fraley, and Chris traveled to Indianapolis to the State Capitol yesterday, where we met up with Dave Hare, and one of our firefighters who serves as our safety officer. Dave has achieved 50 years in the fire service, which is a pretty monumental task. Not only does he still serve, he's very active with our department, and he's not the guy that just sits on the rig and watches, he actually works with us, so.
I swear, every time you guys are out, and I, and I have to be outside, he's coming to the station to either man it or grab something or something, and, and he is, yeah, he's always been very active and focused.
Yeah, just a great individual, and I, it's a testament to him, his wife, and his family, because they sacrifice a lot to do that, and I just want to say publicly, thanks to Dave Hare and his family for allowing him to put 50 years in with us, so, kind of a big deal to me. Board of Works, I'm sorry, fire interviews for our hiring process, the fireside of it will be on the first, which is this Friday, the Board of Works interviews for the hiring process will be on 8 to 3 p.m. And Troy Niffelkamp and Lance Beers just finished up doing our annual gear inspections, I'd like to say thanks to those two individuals for taking that on, that's a pretty big, daunting task, tearing everybody's gear apart, they got inner and outer shells, you have to go through and check for damage, check their serial numbers, the expiration dates, because they expire 10 years after manufactured, not from when you put them in service, but from manufactured, so, it's a, it's not a fun job. And, you gotta tell guys, they gotta take better care of their gear, and wash them more often, and the whole kit and caboodle, so, it's just not a fun job, so, thanks to those two guys, and I think that's it.
And you missed one thing.
Oh, shoot, yes, I did, I wrote down on a separate piece of paper. Earlier this evening, we had a bid opening for a fire truck, Rosie, correct me if I'm wrong, the bid came in at a total of $1,058,298, keep in mind, that's without equipment. We were kind of expecting a price to be that way, that's pretty much the industry standard now. Build time that they've estimated is 650 days, kind of putting that on the calendar, that's the middle of December of 2025, before we would take ownership of said vehicle if we would put that order in, so, yeah, that's what we're up against.
Question to Tom. You missed the biggest thing.
I apologize, it was written on a separate piece of paper, so.
Couple things for your information, first, Sean is out in Washington DC right now, yesterday and today, working with the Department of Transportation on CDLs, and just trying to figure out ways in which municipals can either be exempted out, or at least have a lesser licensing fee, I mean, some of you maybe remember, but it went from just a little bit to a ton of money, I don't remember what the numbers are, but just extraordinary, and the different hoops that we now have to jump through for the CDLs are ridiculous, because we're not long haul truckers, right? So, anyways, he's working on that, he's out there with the Indiana Municipal Electric Association, but he also reports that they are continuing to replace poles on Fair Road. Chip and him attended a, the AIM Legislative Dinner last week on my behalf, and said that it was a great dinner, except for some of our legislators weren't there, so, but, they still have good networking opportunity, for sure. They ordered a fiber splicing equipment, and that should be delivered by mid-March, and they also have a new wire trailer, that he says actually has license plates and terms angles, so it's, we're in good shape on that one, so. Chief Parrot said they currently have an opening, higher, open hiring process in the Police Department, deadline is March 1st at 3 p.m., and they have several applications, they're planning to hire three officers, depending on obviously the pool. The Rave Mass Notification is in full swing, I know that Ashley's been using that in our office, I'm assuming Dispatch has been using that in some ways, and so, I know that they hung flyers around the city, if you don't, if you're not a part of Rave, go to our website, or my Facebook page or something, but, city's Facebook page, et cetera, but, get on the Rave notifications, you can sign up for whatever list you want to, you want to know about when the Aquatic Center's full, you want to know when baseball softball practices, you want to know when there's a street closure, you know, God forbid a boil water advisory or things like that, so. I know, it's always the boil water.
I would say, it was great last week when the light at Thirvey and everything was down.
Yes, I was like, vacation was like, what's this, hi!
Yeah, that was great, because we were going into town, and like, I'm thinking the back light, and recording that traffic.
Yes, yes, and again, that's, the whole goal is to try to educate people about what's going on in the community who don't necessarily get on Facebook, or things like that, right? So, apparently, we're working on maybe getting Officer Clark and his dog Jake into the schools a little bit more, and they're working on policies. On Dispatch, they had a couple tabletops that are being replaced, I think this week, that are under warranty, I keep looking at Savannah, because she's a dispatcher. Response plans are being worked on, and training has been completed, and they are also working on policies and SOPs. Finally, if you did not hear, Matt, hiding our park director, had a little bit of an accident at home, and has been off work recovering from that, healing from that, I know that he's been keeping in contact with his staff, so they're continuing to run the ship, Beth and Rosie have been working with him as well, so, so, in any case, he is, he wants to come back sooner than the doctors, I think, want to let him, but still, he is recovering, so, so with that being said, just a couple more things from me, just so you're aware, number one, tomorrow, I'm gonna be at the State House for the American Commissioners Caucus Day, at the State House, so we'll be there talking to legislators. Thursday, we have Youth Council, and I think we're gonna be, that afternoon, we're gonna be going to the Humane Shelter, which is always something they look forward to. State of the City, like I said, is coming up on the 15th of March, at the library, registration is through the Chamber of Commerce, Visitors Center, and... I think that's all I have for right now. Yes? Dan?
I just, Brad, we don't have a storm tonight, we have a good tree with a cleaning while I'm on the way.
Oh, Dan.
Only water advisory.
What climbed up you today in just a second of hope and stuff?
No, Mike, Mike has one of our pop trucks over to shop, and he let me know the gate, the codes to get into the shop, if we needed to come over there because of the snow tonight, and I'm like, wow, really? Is it snow tonight? Seventy degrees out.
Yeah, yeah.
Ted?
I have no pot slur tonight, so.
Thank you, Leslie.
I'm just excited to say that I have my first meeting with the superintendent of the wastewater plants next Wednesday. I think everybody is sitting on that side, except for one person, I've scheduled, but other than that, everybody's been great at responding, and, I mean, Chip and I are in December, so we've already gotten a date set.
December?
I thought it was a...
For a council member?
No, it was my, it was my choice, it was my choice.
Right now, my schedule's wide open.
He's got, he's got, he's trying to find something.
She's an officer, too.
Somebody here from the press, anything from the audience? Okay, we'll follow up in a minute, thank you.